Code book.
Catch one.
These are solar.
That's my cats.
Cats from the cultural center.
I can't turn it up, so.
From church.
Well, close enough. Not here by now. Somebody will fill you in. Call to order the Woodland Park Planning Commission meeting, regular meeting for July 25, 2013. And do our call to order and our roll call first.
Thank you. Mr. DeVoe?
Here.
Mr. Watson?
Here.
Ms. Mattingly?
Here.
Ms. Probst?
Here.
Mr. Rollinger?
Present.
Mr. Schrader?
Here.
Mr. Standard?
Here.
And Mr. Vogel?
Here.
All our members are here this evening.
If you would join, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. It's time to say.
Pledge allegiance.
To the July of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes of the previous meeting? And are there any corrections or additions to that?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second, please.
Second.
All those by unanimous consent. Say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. We will continue on to item four, which is a request and/or public hearings. We'll read into the, the record that this is Zone 13-2 Starbucks Coffee Company. A crest, request for a planned unit development slash planned business development, PUD, amendment with a site plan reviewed lot two Walmart Center, PUD, PBD, oh, that's fun, PBD, to construct a 1,920 square foot commercial building with an address of 19590 East US Highway 24, Woodland Park, Colorado. This is Riley.
Thank you. This evening, we are reviewing an amendment to the Walmart Center PUD for a Starbucks Company coffee shop. And I will go through a short PowerPoint. But before I begin, I did want to introduce to you the project manager, TJ Katuski?
Kacheski.
Kacheski, thank you. And Daniel Beckerdike. And Daniel is the landscape architect with Sterling Engineers. So first of all, I would like to share with you the aerial of the Walmart PUD as it is today and point out to you the lot number two that is being proposed for the Starbucks site. There are a total of four lots, outlots, that were established on the north end of Walmart. And then there was a six or another site behind Walmart that was established back in 2005 when the PUD, PBD was approved. These are a few photos of the existing outlot. So everybody is familiar coming into the parking lot for Walmart. This will be the lot that is on the right before you go down into the parking lot. And the lower right photo shows the back of Lot Two where an existing sidewalk connects to the trail that was installed by Wal- Walmart adjacent to the Fountain Creek Drainage Channel. And then the main entrance also has existing sidewalks that connect to Morning Sun Drive and Highway 24. The surrounding properties are all of the Walmart lots, including Lot Three just to the north and then Lot Four to the northeast. Lot Three was slated for a sit-down restaurant. Lot Four was slated for a fast food drive-through restaurant. And Lot Five, which is exactly opposite Lot Two to the east, was slated for a fueling facility. And then, of course, Lot One is where the Walmart facility store is constructed. Lot Two was originally designed for a financial institution that had 3,500 square feet. And this is the Walmart PUD Final Development Plan that shows Lot Two in red with that financial institution and the drive-through. But in the narrative of Walmart's Final Development Plan, they included these types of uses, the fueling station, the fast food, as well as the sit-down restaurant and financial institution on these lots, and then noted that they could be interchangeable. So the, the quick service restaurant that Starbucks is proposing on Lot Two is within that allowance of the narrative. What, the reason why it's before you with an amendment is because our code says that if this building moves more than 10 feet, then it must have count, a planning commission's review. And it has, the configuration of the Starbucks building is just pushed back a little bit further, more than 10 feet than the financial institution that was first proposed. So that's why it's here this evening. There was also another condition when Walmart was approved, that the planning commission was to review all the architectural proposals for this site. As you know, we worked very hard to get a great-looking architectural design for Walmart, and that was in order to ensure that whatever else gets built in this PUD, that it is compatible and consistent with the architectural theme that was established with this new store. So tonight, you will have two motions. The first one will deal with the approval of the amendment to the PUD and the final site plan as proposed for the Starbucks. And the second motion will be for the architecture that is being proposed for the Starbucks, which I'll review in just a moment. Next, in your packet attached to the staff report is the site plan. And this site plan shows the location of the building, a little bit under 2,000 square feet, plus the parking area, which has 22 parking spots. The ingress egress is where it was planned for if it were the original site plan. And then the drive-through is situated so that cars, vehicles will be able to access the, the site and then come around to the right, to the back of the building, next to the trail and, and the Fountain Creek area, place their orders, pick up their products, and then be able to drive back through and out. So the circulation should work very nicely with this proposal with the drive-through on the west side of the building. And those folks who would like to come and go inside, or they also have planned a patio on the south side of the building, they can take their time and do that as well. I did ask, there is a loading dock that is proposed on the site and wanted to understand what the usage of that loading dock would be. They have a fairly, a small truck, this is not a semi-truck, but a medium-sized truck that will make three deliveries a week early in the morning and then only be there for about 30 minutes to make their deliveries and then leave. There's also a dumpster location here. I do have a photograph of that if you're interested in seeing it. I was concerned about its architectural style as well, so I'll show that to you at the end of the PowerPoint. I wanted to mention about the traffic counts. The engineer who did the original Walmart traffic study, Curtis Rowe, also wrote a letter to confirm that the number of traffic counts for the site, in fact, is about 414 trips less than what was originally projected. This project is projected to generate about 1,500 average daily trips to the site. Moving on to the landscaping plan that Daniel has been working on, it includes native plants that are acclimatized to our area. He has included sodded areas in the front and native grasses in the back to help reduce the amount of water use on the site. But it's very nicely landscaped, and one of the conditions is to obtain or, or receive the final landscaping plan along with the irrigation plan. Attachment D is the photometrics plan. The, the lights that will be on the site will complement, be exactly the same as the light fixtures that you see coming into the entrance of Walmart. So they are downcast, dark sky, full cutoffs, lights that will be high-pressure sodium, so kind of the softer yellow glow of the existing lights that are in the Walmart facility. Here, we have the building elevations, which show, this is the east elevation facing the service drive, the access, which will have a nice gabled with wood enhancement and stone doors, front doors with large windows and awnings over the windows. And then in the back, that, there will also be a small, smaller gable feature to complement the gable on the front. So very inviting entrance. This north end is the end that they have a service door that will be able to access out to the dumpster and the loading dock. This elevation is of the drive-through side, the west side, and then the lower portion is the south-facing, this will adjoin the patio, the outdoor patio area, and will have a door for that access as well as windows on this side. Again, with the accent of cultured stone and the awning over the windows. When we look at an amendment to the PUD, we first look at, does this, is this compatible with the Final Development Plan requirements? And our staff analysis says that, yes, this is in compliance. It's an acceptable land practice. It promotes public health, safety, and general welfare through good site plan, aesthetically pleasing buildings with connection to the existing sidewalk and trail. It also complies with the provisions of the Walmart PUD, which are identified, the uses for Lot Two through Four, that include a fast food drive-through restaurant. The second portion deals with a very long list of considerations that the plan shall include. They are items one through 13. Most of those items were met with the 2005 final plan that Walmart received approval for, but the few items that would address the site development on Lot Two have also been submitted and met. And with that, the staff recommends approval of the amendment to the Walmart PUD to construct the new Starbucks restaurant. And with a few conditions that the applicant shall submit prior to approval of their zoning development permit, a final landscaping plan, a final drainage plan, and an edit to the drainage conformance letter. You have that in your packet. The drainage has been looked at by our city engineer, Bill Alsbach, and most of the drainage improvements were done with the Walmart improvements. And so this property ties into the overall system that was planned for the entire site. And as you know, a lot of work was done along Fountain Creek in order for this property to be developed. Then a final utility plan with a water fixture unit count be included in that. That's where the irrigation plan is also important for the utilities director to take a look at, as well as the final grading and erosion control plan. So that's the first motion. The second motion will involve the approval of the architectural design as shown by the color renderings. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
In the staff analysis, I didn't hear any mention of variances on height or anything like that. Does the, does the current plan meet all those requirements?
That's correct. The current plan meets the height requirements.
One of the concerns that I have, because I do work at Walmart and I'm familiar with the traffic down there, is based on where the entrance would be to go in and out of that building, it's right past the curve, there's a slight hill, there's, and it's one lane. So I'm a little concerned about the traffic that would be turning in, but also more so the traffic coming out with those other curves. Has that been addressed and is it a concern?
Yes. When Curtis Rowe did the traffic analysis, the configuration and the work that was done in order to handle and, and the project, I was just looking at the traffic report today, the projected trips for build-out and the way this was designed is for 15,000 average daily trips. So the speeds are very low in here.
The posted speeds are low, but okay.
Fifteen, 15,000 for the whole shopping center. At build-out, at build-out. And so this was very carefully analyzed. As I mentioned, for the Starbucks, this is 1,500 average daily trips. So it should be fine, and it was planned for this access, for this one lot, to be at this point. Now, when the lot for the gas station or filling station develops, it will also be in that proximity in the opposite side. So the, this traffic was very carefully analyzed to be able to handle this.
Is there a plan in the future to have a, like a, a centered turn lane, left turn lane in that?
There is.
It looks like, I'm, I guess it's my probably lack of experience with the map, but it looks like there's almost a left turn lane down a little up there.
There is when you, after you come, make the full curve and you have to go right or left down into Walmart, there is a turn lane.
The left. Right where my arrow is, there is a left turn lane to be able to come down.
Left.
I was thinking if you're coming out to be able to turn left into the lot, that's not an option.
No, no.
The exit lane is only one lane.
Correct.
And the entrance are two lanes.
Yes.
One for going in the left lane to turn, or in many cases, they could go around the car and continue on to the right if they had to.
Who's responsible for snow removal in that particular area? Is it Walmart or is it the city?
It is Walmart. This is a private ingress egress with, for public access.
One more question on the, on the traffic study. So it says this was based on a coffee donut shop with drive-through, I mean, that's what they based the study on. Did they ba, curious if they took, I, I guess, I believe Starbucks is a little more busy than the average donut coffee shop, just from experience and other, do you know if they have like data on Starbucks itself with their drive-throughs as opposed to just a general donut coffee shop? Because I, I mean, just curious if that was taken into consideration with this.
Not sure if the traffic engineers have that. They rely upon the international code for traffic engineers. And TJ may have some more.
The, the ITE is what the traffic engineers use, international traffic.
Hopefully Starbucks has made a big impact on that.
It's actually been, since Starbucks started doing their drive-throughs, that's actually been a new category that they added to the traffic.
Excellent. Because I've seen a couple that have been implemented in bigger cities, of course, that didn't work out.
Yeah, and.
As designed, I guess.
Yeah, and typically, the coffee donut shop is actually higher than most fast food restaurants per square foot. It's just that the square footage is lower for a coffee and donut shop that usually reduces the trips, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I have a curiosity question.
Sure.
Is this a replacement Starbucks or is this an additional Starbucks for Woodland Park?
That one, I am not sure on. I have a call into our oper, into the Starbucks operations group. They actually handle that. We've been working with the developer, who is actually designing and doing the building for Starbucks. So I know there's the one right down here and there's also one in Safeway.
Curiosity.
So the, the left hand or the turn out of the proposed Starbucks is not just a right-hand turn only, it will be able, you'll be able to go left out of there as well? Is that correct?
You'll be able to go right and left, yes.
It's gonna be, I, I mean, I can foresee some real issues there. Because it is slightly on a hill and there's a big curve both directions.
I know I, when I drive in and out of there, I get uncomfortable, you know, with people coming in, making a left turn down to the left side of Walmart and other people going to the right, then you're gonna have traffic coming out of the Starbucks right about, above, right about the place where people are making the decision to go right or left. It's a confusing, as it exists now, I think it's a kind of confusing.
I think it can be monitored and there is good visibility, site visibility there, but they may need to start posting speed limit signs. I don't think there's any speed limit signs there now. And if it were posted at 20 miles an hour or slower, that might help.
People fly down that.
People fly, I mean, I don't care what speed limits you put on there, they come flying.
Maybe this will slow them down.
Yeah, speed bump might help slow it down.
Twenty-four foot width of the, the enter-exit only allows for two lanes, so there won't be a left turn lane and a right turn lane coming out. It'll be just one lane coming out, one lane coming in. Was it considered to have a left turn lane so it doesn't get backed up if people are going left or right? Was that a consideration?
That might cause the worst problem. You got two cars coming out, one going left, one going right same time.
I was just thinking of backing up into the park, you know, people coming in for the dri, you know, just kind of getting adjusted.
We've always had a design for only two lanes, one in, one out. I know early in the process, we did look at moving the entrance down further on the site, and that was, I think, believed to be rejected by some of the city staff, and it was not as approved in the BUD. So we went back to the original BUD design, and that's where the entrance exit currently is. I don't believe we've ever had the three lanes only two.
How much of an issue would it be, so I'd have three lanes?
Well, it would require the applicant to widen their access drive. We could have them look at that as a possibility to be able to give a dedicated left turn out of there. I think that what will happen here is that you're gonna see the peak use or the, the highest in and out is going to be early in the morning, when you're not going to have as many shoppers necessarily. And then in the evening, coming home, might have more of a conflict.
After work.
After work, yeah.
Did you say 1,500 cars per day?
1,500 is the.
Or Starbucks.
Is the Starbucks.
So at 16 hours, it's 93 cars an hour.
Right.
Doubt if it's that evenly spaced through the evening.
But I'm just saying, if it was spaced out over 16 hours, it's 93.75 cars per hour.
That's a lot of cars.
Yeah.
Compared to 45,000 a day on Highway 24, it's not too bad.
I have a question for Sally. The proximity of the loading zone and the trash area to the north side of the building, is there some reason that the trash in the loading zone couldn't have been in that area just to, just to the north of the door rather than have to, have to haul everything across the parking lot?
Well, I don't think that you want trash and trucks right adjacent to your building. They wanted to probably keep that more of a pristine, inviting entrance. And with loading zone and trash considerations, by tucking it over here in this northern corner, the trucks are able to get in and out fairly easily to access that trash area and the delivery area. And then maybe Daniel can talk about how he's planned to landscape those areas to be able to soften that look. And I did promise to show you the, there's a picture of trash enclosure that they, TJ provided me as an example.
So it looks like a little blockhouse.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, McDonald's has a similar trash container that is tucked, you, you really don't even notice it because of the way it's tucked in off the side of their parking lot and the landscaping that's around it.
Starbucks generally likes to get their trash enclosure away from the building, plus the drive-through lanes, just for further consideration. So that's one reason we normally try to get it further away than from the building. So that's one reason we normally try to get it further away than from the building. Between the trash enclosure and the sidewalk, we do provide evergreen trees and some shrubbery in there to, um, take a buffer between the two areas plus, um, more evergreens and trees on the north and in between trash enclosure and the road. We try to screen it as well as possible. I think with the shrubs in the summer, definitely with the evergreens all year round. I don't think it'll be too big of a eyesore and, you know, really pops out in general.
Thank you.
A question on your, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just real quick, I'm assuming the trash enclosure will be bear proof? Is that a requirement?
They, they are required to be enclosed and then they're required to have a, um, bar that goes across. It's, it's not necessarily a requirement to have them, like the ones you have in the campgrounds with a very small top to get into. If, if we do see that there are bear problems in the area, then we talk with the operators and owners and try to encourage them to go to a much more expensive. I'm only aware of one bear proof, fully bear proof container within the city limits today.
Sally, who would I address questions to regarding, oh, the construction, uh, who's going to work there, et cetera? Who, who would?
That'll be the project manager.
Who would take those?
If we're, to keep, to keep in the outline of what we're supposed to be doing. Okay, Sally's supposed to have her comments and then, then we're gonna have the presentation by the applicant and then questions for both afterwards. So rather than take all your thunder away from you, we're gonna give you an opportunity to talk about this first.
Shall we move on to let the applicant, uh, speak then and let TJ do his presentation?
Okay.
So, um, basically, uh, the Starbucks design is a, um, it's a nineteen-hundred-twenty square foot building. It's kind of a, uh, they consider it their prototype building. So it's a similar design, uh, building that they're building all over the country. What they've done is they've gone through, um, the different areas and they designed the building to fit in, blend in with the surroundings. In this case with the, kind of the timber and stone of the Wal- of the Walmart center, they've done that to, uh, meet those. They kinda wanna get that mountain feel. They've, they learned very early on that they can't do one design for every place. So, uh, as far as, uh, construction, uh, goes, um, currently there, we don't have a general contractor picked on the site, it is out to bid. They do have, they're all, uh, local Colorado contractors. I know one out of, uh, Colorado Springs, uh, Kristofferson Commercial Builders is one of the, uh, contractors that is bidding on it. So, uh, then there's another, uh, two or three out of Denver that are bidding on it as well.
Can I assume that they'll draw the construction and traffic on that construction that we limited to the site?
Correct. Uh, there, yeah, everything, uh, once they'll go in, they'll do their preliminary grading. They'll, uh, most likely set some type of, uh, kind of like a Connex construction trailer that they can store equipment on, have a office on site. And then, uh, and that will stay on site throughout the construction. So, uh, all deliveries will be made on site. Porta potties, everything will be on site.
There will be no parking on the street.
Nah, I, I've been to the Walmart and with the traffic, I would, yeah, will strongly, uh, give them that strong message that they can't park on the street. So, um, I, the only thing I can see initially would be offloading of any type of excavation equipment, something like that, uh, when they first start just getting it to the site and making those cuts.
A question on your landscaping, okay? I'm assuming this is the time we can ask either of them. When Walmart, uh, built their facility, uh, there was a size requirement on all the trees. They didn't get to put in twigs. I think there was a minimum of six feet high on all the, all the pine, uh, non-desidious trees that they brought in there. Secondly, there was a drip system installed for all of watering of all of those, all of that stuff. What's involved with yours?
There is drip irrigation to all truck, to all shrubs and trees. Native grasses will not be irrigated. The sod up front next to the road will be irrigated. Um, as far as trees, the landscape plan does specify a size for all the trees. I'm just looking at it. But I believe there are minimum of at least six feet tall on all the evergreens. All the evergreen trees are either six foot or eight foot minimums. All deciduous trees are, there's one that's three inch caliper, one two and a half inch caliper, one, that's a six foot size.
And then a maintenance, uh, agreement of as the trees, if something dies or changing that, uh, your ground cover and stuff like that will be refreshed and done, some kind of a, uh, some kind of a program?
Yes, um, currently in our construction specs, their contractors guaranteed to replace any dying plant material within one year, then after that, all of it will be up to, um, Starbucks.
Okay, thank you.
What's the proposed finished date for building?
Can you repeat that one more time?
When's the building supposed to be completed?
So, as far as, uh, construction goes, they're usually on a ninety-day construction schedule. So once they start construction, uh, right now we are just finishing up our building plans to submit to Teller County. Uh, those should probably be in within the next two weeks. And then from there, I believe Teller County is around, uh, three weeks for, uh, review of the plans, depending on their comments, if we have any corrections we need to make. So we should probably be starting, uh, in no more than six weeks from now and then ninety days from that.
Christmas.
So, yeah.
Is, is that gonna be a problem with the landscaping going into winter, trying to put the landscaping in? You can't put grass in the wintertime.
We have a stipulation in our landscape plans, they can only plant during a certain time of the year. So if they go beyond that time, they will have to plant it in the early springtime.
And the way that's handled with the city is that we collect an escrow or, um, a guarantee in the amount of a hundred and fifty percent of the value of the landscaping. So we hold that guarantee and usually give, uh, companies until June first to be able to install and finish the landscaping.
With something put down to help the erosion of the, the bare dirt during the wintertime until it can be put in?
Um, typically that's, uh, would be, um, in the erosion control plan. And if they don't seed it within a certain amount of time, they do have to put down some type of seeding or erosion control, erosion control mat to stop erosion through that time.
Okay. They'll have silk fencing and the proper, um, EMTs, the best management practices for, uh, erosion control in place while the property is under construction. And those must be maintained until the stabilization is complete.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Uh, who is the owner of lot two at this point?
Uh, currently it's, uh, Walmart is the owner of the lot. We are, uh, then we're working with, uh, Net Lease Alliance, who is, uh, purchasing the lot from Walmart.
And Starbucks will own the lot or will lease the lot?
They will lease the lot from, uh, Net Lease Alliance.
Is that, is that pretty typical across the country, lease rather than own?
Yeah, the, yeah, Starbucks, uh, they have a few pieces of ground that they actually own, but a majority of their stores are on leases, uh, whether they be in an inline center or a standalone building.
Well, that makes sense, the, the money's in the, in the retail traffic, not in the dirt.
Makes it easy to walk away though.
Will this be a company-owned store or will it be a franchise?
Uh, all the stores except for the ones that you see inside of grocery stores are, uh, company-owned.
And I, I realize you're involved primarily in getting it up and in and open. And I'm thinking about the economic impact. And I'm cer- certainly pleased that, you know, that there's a, a general from Colorado Springs is bidding. Thinking about the employees, is, does Starbucks typically try and recruit locally?
Yes.
For their, for their stores?
Yes, they do. Usually they'll, uh, either promote someone from the region for, uh, a new store manager or, uh, uh, hi- hire someone from locally from it. Just kinda depending on their employment needs at that time, uh, what they have. If there's, they feel they have somebody, uh, or they'll move somebody, they've moved people around a little bit, but usually they stay within the regional area.
Well, like most of the country, uh, Willem Park needs jobs. So that's, that's good news. And I heard something about being open sixteen hours, is that, is that the estimated?
Uh, their typical hours are usually five AM till, uh, ten PM. Um, those can.
Not up here.
No, not, I, I mean, those do vary based on location. I think the, their, their biggest thing is their evening hours aren't, they're not so concerned about. That's kinda, excuse me, their lower end of the traffic, they get more of the people uh, in the mornings on their way to work, so. Uh, I know Sally kinda talked about the deliveries a little bit. Usually the deliveries are made between four and five in the morning, so.
Similar to McDonald's. They're in early before they get a lot of drive-up.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they'd rather have those type of items taken care of early on when they're not, uh, open. That way, uh, they're, they don't have issues with traffic. I don't think with this site, with the, uh, loading zone there, that they'd have any issues. But some of their other stores in more metropolitan, uh, areas like downtown Denver, Cherry Creek, you know, they have, they have to work a little bit harder cause the trucks end up parking, uh, on the street or in a short-term loading zone, so.
I'd like to readdress the traffic again because it, you had said sixteen hours. If they close at eight o'clock like the one there on West, that's gonna drop it quite a bit, which means there's gonna be more cars per hour. So it's gonna be more congested. And then coming in and out of that, that single drive.
When we originally did all the projections with Walmart, if you remember, there were two left-hand turn lanes on Highway twenty-four. And the, those, those very, very generous projections did not work out. And if you know, and, you know, they've changed the signals there, there's only one left-hand turn lane. Remember, we had deceleration lanes that were longer than a quarter mile drag strip. But we had, we, it was overkill at that point in time. There was just more and they've closed one of those down since then. Now, they can always reopen that and that'll be based on, as we get towards build-out, what kind of the traffic's gonna be in there.
Yeah, but if we only require them to have one lane in and out, they're not, we can't require them to go back a year from now and put in another lane. I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, based on that many cars coming in and out in such a short period of time, I'd like to look again at having the one lane coming in, but have a left turn and a right turn lane coming out.
At peak traffic hours, are we likely to have that much traffic turning towards Walmart or be turning back toward the freeway?
It'll be going back to the freeway.
Yeah.
Won't be coming in.
So they won't be making right turns often coming out of it?
Not at their peak time. Cause Walmart doesn't start getting busy till after nine. One of the things that happens is, well, not really busy. I go out there every morning. If you, if you flood too much with a left turn and a right turn, then you've got two cars exiting instead of one and it may create a worse traffic problem than having one at a time. Your orientation of your building is very similar to Burger King. As far as the north side and your, and your ability to go up to the drive-in and have a staging area as you go around the north side of that building will keep some of the flow of cars backing up coming off that road, I would assume. That's the same thing that happens at, uh, at Burger King right now. And then the same thing true, they, they kinda go around that west side of Burger King. And, uh, if there's gonna be any, uh, then all of the, the, uh, impact of a lot of people in line are out of the parking lot. They're back in that, in that area as it goes into that. And, and then they're gonna, they're gonna be released on a slower basis because it's gonna be one person at a time, somebody pulling up, so. I don't know how we, I, I understand your concern, but we gotta, it, to, I think whatever the, the engineers, the traffic people that sign off of it and do that, we had the same thing with Walmart doing all that. If we don't start taking them, I don't, I don't know who we, we talk to. Cause I think somewhere along the line, I'm assuming somewhere along the line, that's been looked at. And the engineers have, have, have taken that in their consideration of what that traffic's gonna be and have looked at that plan. I'm sure somebody's physically been out there looking at that. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes.
I'm sure Starbucks knows exactly how many cars are permitted to go through the drive-thru.
Right, from a, right, from a practical standpoint, I mean, you think about it, if they're, if, uh, coffees are delivered through the drive-through at a, at a rate and, you know, whatever it is per hour and you're exiting, however that breaks down, however many cars are exiting left turn in the morning out of there, it's, you know, with, with not a lot of traffic coming in, it probably does make sense. But it just, um, I'm, I was, my comment was more of, um, fifteen hundred cars a day. It's pretty impressive, so.
They don't all go through the drive-through.
That's true.
A lot of them stay there.
Cars per person at the drive-through a day combined, that's a lot of traffic, so.
And I, and I brought it up just cause I wanted to understand if it had been studied, if they looked at it. And you're probably right, Johnny, they hopefully did all their homework and, and have looked at other Starbucks that they've put in and realized that they, um, it's a busy place, so.
They hope so.
Yeah, it'd be great.
I mean, one thing Starbucks has always done, once it's, once they started their drive-through program, was they did their own traffic studies to determine the size of the, uh, queue length that they need for the drive-through lane. They, their, their studies have showed that they need at least a minimum of eight cars for any drive, for their drive-throughs. With that, they've discovered that if they have too many, if they put too many cars in, people see the line and just keep going, so they won't stop. Or, uh, if they put too few, then they have traffic issues. Uh, so, uh, with this one, we have, uh, ten cars in the drive-through lane. So it's kind of a happy, uh, kind of a happy medium. It's not too few, not too many, but, uh, it's gonna, uh, be bad for business in either way that people are not gonna stop or, uh, that they're gonna have traffic issues with, on the site, so.
What do you estimate your peak morning hour or, or hours to be? Just, just roughly? You know, like six to eight or?
I mean, it varies per site. I think this site, they're thinking probably around six to eight. They figure they'll get some that are, uh, earlier than that, but not, but usually at six, they'll get more of the people heading into Colorado Springs for work, starting around that time.
And how about in the afternoon or the, the evening? Is there, is there kind of a bubble of activity?
Usually between five and seven.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Further questions?
Well, then we'll say thank you, and we may call you back again. At this stage, we are going to open the public comment, close the public comment, rebuttal from the applicant, planning commission ask any final questions, unless you want to, there's nobody to rebut. Okay. Now's the time, folks. You got something else you want to talk about it? Let's do it.
Any other questions?
Well, I just want to say from a positive standpoint, I think this is a huge plus. I'm sorry it took so long to get one of the outlets filled. This is a major business with a great reputation. The structure itself and the landscaping look great, and welcome to Willam Park.
You know, somebody from a national level's got to take the first shot. Somebody's got to say, "Yeah, we're going to go in there." And what that'll do, that'll have other people looking at it as well. And I think you probably, folks, see that as you go around and develop other sites. Somebody's got to take that first plunge and do that. And I'm assuming that's part of this got to do with your success at the Starbucks location that's downtown. But the traffic, like high school kids go there all the time. They're going to be in school at ten of eight. So they're all going to be out of it before that.
I can't foresee that morning would be an issue because, like you say, we don't start getting busy until eight-thirty, nine o'clock. Usually parents take their kids, drop them off, and then do their shopping. So I can't see morning as an issue. What I can see is the afternoons, the evening hours. And I can see that there's traffic.
One of the things that, in the Starbucks I've been to in big cities, and if they're in a 16th Street mall, okay, that's got a huge business at night, just because the mall's busy. I'm not so sure you're looking for a huge business at night. There's not entertainment around there. And I don't know how expanding your menu you're going to be, but I would think a giant part of your traffic is going to be during the day and over with. Is that a fair assumption? This way, you're going to be able to accommodate more people per hour in the morning, where you're probably turning away now. It's probably one of the reasons you guys got to be looking at this to increase, you know, your volume, and that's what it's all about.
One last thing. Whenever Starbucks looks at a site, one of the things that they'll do is they look at whether it's on an AM or PM side of the road. So, and they'll design the site accordingly to that. So that is something that they also look at is, are they getting it in the morning? They want to be on which side of the road? So they'll work with that as they take that into consideration in their designs as well.
The science of marketing. Marketing is a science.
It is.
Of sales. Okay. It's our turn to kind of talk among ourselves now. We've gotten through that part of it. Express any questions or your comments or your positions on that, and then eventually encourage a motion and a second, and any further discussion in our normal thing we have to go through.
Just a comment. I'm less concerned about the traffic flow than some of my fellow commissioners. I think that if I were coming out of Walmart, I would know which way to exit, so that I didn't encounter the traffic at Starbucks. And I think that's going to direct more of the Starbucks, I mean Walmart, traffic to the north side along twenty-four, and then the Starbucks traffic will come in on that other side. I don't anticipate it being that big a problem. And especially as someone's pointed out, morning is going to be the biggest volume. That is mostly before Walmart opens, and so that is, again, going to be a lesser impact from my perspective of the traffic flow.
I think Marty's got a point there, and I've experienced what several other commissioners have experienced in there. Too much speed and not paying attention to who's going which way.
Well, and they need to re-stripe that road.
Yeah.
Because it has faded so bad that oftentimes if you're in that left lane to turn left, you're going to get hit, people coming around the other curve. And so I think we should encourage Walmart to keep up with that road maintenance and get that thing striped the way it should be.
That's true.
And like you say, the speed, I mean, they come around that curve a hundred miles an hour, come in both ways, and it is dangerous, and I don't know any way to slow it down, other than a speed bump. And you really don't want to see that going into a Walmart, but...
More traffic slows things down.
One of the things that there's, the problem is going in because the transition...
Coming off the highway.
When you come off the highway to get over in the left, and then even more so when you come out, until you've been there a bunch of times, you don't realize you've got to go all the way right because there's only one lane going out. You don't want to hit the stuff coming in where there's two lanes. They don't stripe that enough and keep that. They've got to work on that so that you know where you're going. That sounds, because once you get around that final curve, you have plenty of time to decide, do you want to go straight? Do you want to go left? Do you want to go right? But it's that, before you get there, your entrance, that they've got to stripe that well, so that you know definitely where you're going. Agreed?
Good point. Yep.
People who've been here a lot know how to do that. You just learn to survive coming through there, but for them, it's a... Any other question?
Summer people may have a problem.
Yeah, any other questions? I would entertain a motion if you are ready.
We have two motions this evening regarding the project.
First one is the amendment in the site plan.
Yes.
Do we motion them separately, or?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll motion to approve an amendment to the construction of the new Starbucks Coffee Company Quick Service Restaurants with the list of conditions.
Still needed, okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for the question.
Watson?
Agreed.
Mattingly?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Rollinger?
Aye.
Schrader?
Yes.
Stannard?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
And Devoe?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
The second motion is for the architectural, for the building.
I would make that motion for the architectural design with the attachments.
As shown by the attachments.
Yes.
Second. A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Okay, Mattingly?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Rollinger?
Aye.
Schrader?
Yes.
Stannard?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devoe?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Carries unanimously.
Well, good luck. Hope it all goes smoothly.
Open by Christmas. Hopefully.
They told you to it.
How about delivery?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you in town. Look forward to that. Work sessions really should be down at the bottom, so let's, do we go to reports?
Yes, thank you. First of all, we'd like to welcome our newest member to the planning commission, Steve Stannard. And we're really thankful that he stepped up and put in his application, so.
Limited to five minutes. Might tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, I'm Steve Stannard. Only been in the city for less than a year and a half, actually. Moved in and built a house on the ballpark, so that's sort of how everybody knows you. I'm a semi-retired illuminating engineer, so lighting is my career-based thing, my business. So one of the things that I'll be paying very close attention to on everybody's behalf is the details of lighting on projects.
Fantastic.
Because it matters to me, yeah. And I'd ask you all to please bear with me not being familiar with the nomenclature and different types of permission and things like that that I'll be running with my life.
Welcome.
Welcome.
So we all still are.
Yeah.
Any more reports?
Just to remind everyone, we will have a meeting next month on the eighth of August. We don't have a case, but we do have a lot of amendments to our code that we need to continue to discuss, and I'll share more information when we're in the work session. And Jeff Watson attended our CML meeting a couple months, a month ago.
Month ago, yeah.
And wondered if he would like to share with all of you a little bit about what he had learned or experienced.
What I'd learned and experienced. Well, first of all, if you ever get the opportunity to do that, please do. Because I wasn't quite sure what I was going to find there, but I found it very educational. And it was really exciting to see what a lot of communities in Colorado are doing and the way they're doing it. You know, there are hosts, you couldn't attend all the things that you wanted to, but each thing I attended was well-presented, good speakers, good presentations, covering a host of topics. I, what struck me, the two that I think that I really... Well, I attended one where I learned about city funding, which was, you know, pretty arcane, but, you know, it was just really interesting, the sources of fundings and types of funds that cities deal with. So that was enlightening. I attended a session entitled, I think, Recovery from Recession, presented by Golden, Colorado, and Fort Collins. And the interesting part, interesting facet of that particular presentation was is that the way these two communities dealt with their citizenry in terms of trying to get something done. You know, they faced, after the recession, low funds, yet they had a lot of capital improvements that needed to be made. If they were delayed, why, it would cost them, oh, maybe sixty percent more in future years to do the same thing that they could do present day, but they didn't have the money. Their approach was, you know, I mean, they had focus groups with the citizenry. They used, you know, social media to communicate with the citizenry. They, rather than going out and saying, just saying, "We want to increase taxes," they went out to the community and presented their analysis to the community, and they had interaction between the communities. So the community, in effect, was privy to the analysis that went into their requirements, even before they asked for taxes. So they essentially asked the community to prioritize, not just the planning commission, but, you know, the citizenry to, in effect, prioritize. So they went, you know, so they needed a tax increase, and they got sixty percent of the population approval. And I think it was just because of the way they approached their citizenry, the way they interacted with the citizenry to affect the change or get the resources that they needed to, you know. Because once the citizenry saw the analysis, why, they pretty much came on board, which was kind of neat. I don't know whether we do that in this community, but, you know, in terms of taxes and that sort of thing, but that was interesting. The other one that was truly interesting was there was a presentation on broadband. And it had to do with economic development. They had a Washington lobbyist came in and spoke, but who was obviously pro-broadband. But, you know, they showed, you know, those of us that have been around a while are familiar. It used to be really neat if you could get a T-one line into your facility, you know. And, you know, things have progressed so far, and many communities are still with those T-one lines. But the pitch is, or the, you know, the argument is, is that businesses of the future that are looking to locate someplace, one of the things they look at is how quickly, you know, what the data rate is, and how quickly they can, you know, communicate and do their business, and that's a big thing. And it turns out Colorado has a law that's promoted by the cable industry and the other providers of data that restricts, very severely restricts municipalities from opting for a broadband solution for their communities. Longmont, the only way you can do it is, is that if you put it up to vote for the community. Longmont did that. Their citizens approved that. So you bring the broadband in, and I think the broadband pipe runs along Route seventy, so it's pretty proximate to some places. So you put that in, and what they do is they, you know, they run it to their schools, it improves the schools, they run it to their emergency services, all of those kinds of things the city buys into, and then you get relatively inexpensive cable service throughout the population. But the big pitch I thought was, the interesting thing was, is that, you know, when you look at our plan, you know, we're desirous of attracting high-tech communities. I don't know what our infrastructure is here. I don't know what it is at Willam Park, but if it is anything like me trying to work with CenturyLink to get a bundle, and, you know, they can't service me and Ezra thing, it's, I don't think we're there. So, you know, the economic development associated with high data rates is, was kind of eye-opening and interesting. There just, it was a... Other than that, although, you know, I went to one that was Small Town Solutions, and they, you know, really small towns, eight hundred people. They were talking about how they're doing their management, so that... But in any case, it's well worthwhile. I mean, there's a lot of topics. There was, the governor spoke, and he was very interesting. Spoke, took on all the issues that, you know, gun control, marijuana, and all the things that he had promoted. Gave some pretty rational explanations about why he did what he did. I was trying to think what... Just, you know, just a host of things that you could learn, and it was primarily a big learning experience.
Very glad that you were able to attend, and we will continue to budget for at least one of you to attend that on any annual basis.
I would suggest that if you're going to be on here, you know, for a couple of years, why, it's a good thing to go to.
And with respect to broadband, just to let you know that Ryan Fleer and the Economic Development Office, they have a small committee that is working with that. We do have quite a few options in this community, you know, between Peak Internet, Baha Cable, CenturyLink, and then we also receive updates by Verizon and AT&amp;T for the antennas on Gold Hill to upgrade those. So there's quite a bit going on. In fact, the CenturyLink engineer has been in getting a lot of easement information from us recently because they're looking at expanding the fiber optics.
Is that part of that Prism TV that they've, I've seen advertised, and they say they have it in the Springs now? Is that what they're trying to maybe bring up here?
Not aware of that.
I talked to CenturyLink today about Prism. You know, every once in a while, you look at your cable bill, and to do that, and they said to check on a monthly basis because they're turning on sites all over the Springs. What Prism is going to be, it's going to be voice-over data that they're going to run, similar to what Peak Internet is doing in some cases. And you'll be able to have that in your home right through the same lines that come in and service your telephone. And it's, if you just Google Prism for CenturyLink, they got the pricing and everything in there. It's less money and that type of stuff. But they're, and that might be part of the one, the reason they're looking for fiber optics.
Yeah.
Because they need more, they need more pair, need more bandwidth.
It seems to be the key is the fiber optics.
Do most of the businesses have the T-one? I know Caldwell Banker Building has T-one.
I'm not aware. I was aware that Stern... I'm not aware, I was aware that Sturman's had a T-one line to their facility.
If you look at the, they, if you look at the charts, the, the data rate, you know, it's astronomical between T-one and, and the broadband, you know, contemporary.
If you're on Valley View, you've got about fourteen meg. If you move over to where I'm at on, not very far from there, Kelly's Road, we've got four and a half. If I go all the way out to where the office is, we've got ten. So there's no consistency. And part of that's their equipment of how many people are on at one time, and that's where they need more, more cable to do all that.
That's Century.
Yeah.
And they're the only game in town. Okay.
I love it. I work from home, so I do a lot of stuff.
The more competition, the better, just keeps the prices down for the consumer.
So we can retire to the work session and continue?
Adjourn.
No motion required.